Y'all can find your seats. The City of Castle Hills City Council will convene into a regular meeting on September 10th, 2019 at 6:30 PM in the council chamber is located at 209 Limitwood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas. I'm gonna call the Castle Hills City, regular city council meeting in order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present? See, we have Mr. Pinkston here. I'm hoping you can help us with our invocation.
That's great. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for this city that we're so pleased and blessed to live in and just having a community with people who care about each other. And I just thank you for those who are gathered in this room tonight. I just want to pray over this council and those that support it in its, in its effort to take care of us and to do the right thing in our city. Help each of the decisions tonight be just solid and wisdom to see the right, the wrong, the good, the, and the right road. Just thank you for the courage to do the right thing. And, and, and Lord, we just, again, thank you for living in this community with people who matter and who we want to feel like they matter. And just use this meeting tonight for good, and we thank you in advance in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Zuniga, will you lead us in the pledge? Okay, next, we have acknowledgements and presentations. Mr. Rapley?
I don't know if you'd like to come down here and take a picture, Mayor, but what we did was as a gratitude for her volunteer service here with the City of Castle Hills, Judy Crawford, we got her a plaque, flowers. She's still gonna continue, but she's been doing it for a while, and we, we are appreciative of all her time she spends up helping us. All the office, the administration office, the finance office, she's been very helpful. So we just want to acknowledge her and her volunteer work for the City of Castle Hills.
Okay, Mr. Rapley, is that it as far as our acknowledgements and presentations?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, next, we are going to proceed with citizen comments. Do you know, Ms. Gonzalez, do you know if we have any people that have signed up to speak for citizens to be heard? Thank you, ma'am. I understand. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, first on the list is Mr. John Squire. Mr. Squire, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I begin, though, I'd like to ask you, on the way to sign, the signup sheet tonight, it's a little, little questioning. I'd like to be able to speak, first of all, under citizens to be heard just in general, and then also we signed up for a couple of agenda items. Is that, is that acceptable?
Mr. Schnall, I believe that it is.
As long as the, the individual has signed up on the appropriate list, it would be acceptable.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for indulging. Appreciate you. Thank you, Mark. I didn't prepare any notes for this. All I wanted to say is, is I learned today that Mr. Bolton resigned or was terminated under President Trump's counsel, and I was kind of disturbed to hear that. That's the fourth, fourth individual for this position that's, that's changed. Quite a, quite a lot of turnover in that administration. It's unfortunate to see. It's a strong administration, but it's fortunate to see all the turnover. And what I've been hearing over and over again is a lack of stability, and I hate to see that in our federal government, but more so, I hate to see the lack of stability in our local city government. And I ask for council to think about the decisions and what the impact that they have in regards to personnel, management, non-management alike, citizens, and also the perception of our community when we have high turnover and not supporting. In order for the bigger picture, in order for the city to start reaching out and to get some respect, we need to have a stable government in our community. And I ask for y'all to take that in consideration as you're making your deliberations and making your decisions, that stability is a key, one of the keys, to try to bring resources into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Next, we have Mr. Frank Paul. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bernard Yettermeyer.
Thank you, council. Bernard Yettermeyer, 115 East Castle Lane. Today, I wanted to thank the Castle Hills Women's Club for their generous donation for a special need swing at Castle Hills Elementary. They funded, they had a meeting, and then they funded a, the swing for the school. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, and Judy's the president, so I mean, she already got flowers, so. And I think that was it. Oh, Matthew, Matthew, Matthew wanted a basketball court and a tennis court. Right, Matthew? So I needed to say that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see here. First, we have, actually, I had a request to move an item up. I'd like to pull it, actually. Discussion and possible action regarding the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, City Manager Ryan Rapley for incompetence, corruption, misconduct, and malfeasance.
I will go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and do that.
A motion to pull it?
Yes.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, consent agenda. The consent agenda items are self-explanatory by the council or have been previously discussed and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. The consent agenda, consent agenda is for consideration by the city council only and not subject to public discussion.
I'd like to approve the entire agenda. I, I move to approve the entire consent agenda by one vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have about two dozen corrections for these minutes, and I would be happy to approve them with the corrections.
Okay.
I'd like to...
I'll amend my motion to approve the minutes with the corrections offered by Ms. McLean.
Perfect. Thank you.
I would like to pull all of item A for the reason that I did quite a bit of work making corrections. I don't think that anybody's particularly interested in hearing that here. Most of the corrections that I made were not included, and I was never told why. So until they are, I would like to pull all of item A.
I object to pulling these. They've been, they've been on the agenda for 13 months. We're a year behind. Ms. Winger has had two opportunities at least in the office to spend time with Ms. Gonzalez to correct this time. It's silly to keep doing this. This is obstreperous and useless to waste our time redoing this every month. We've done it for 13 months. I don't see that we should do it again. I call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger. Actually, we have a call for the vote, so...
Well, I'd like to finish what you just addressed.
Well, we have a call for the vote, Ms. Winger. I'm sorry.
Can we have a discussion?
Mr. Schnall, is there a discussion with a call for a vote?
There can be discussion on the call for a vote, and that would be voted on separately rather than voting on the main motion.
Okay. We have a call for a vote. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, would Mr. McCormick repeat what we'd be voting on for the call for the vote, please?
The motion is that I require, move to approve the entire consent agenda with the addition of the corrections submitted by you on one vote.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
So basically, what you're saying is that the corrections that I submitted when I was duly elected and Ms. McLean was not, they're not being considered, but Ms. McLean's are. Is that the answer?
I'm not saying anything of the kind. What I'm saying is that we've wasted enough time with your foolishness.
I wasted a lot of time.
Excuse me, but I'm...
Okay, let's keep it together. Mr. Gregory?
We're up for a vote now, I think, on the...
Well, so, vote for discussion. That's correct. All in favor of discussion?
I'd like to...
All opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Abstained.
He'd, he'd called for the vote on his motion, not discussion.
So that was a vote to have discussion as per Mr. Schnall.
Mr. Schnall had given us permission to discuss if the council approved the discussion, notwithstanding that there was a call for the vote. The question that Mr. Trevino asked was, do we, do we now have a vote on the discussion? And the vote on the discussion was tied. We had three abstentions unless you want to call for another vote, Ms. ...
Call for the vote again. All in favor of discussion? Ms. Winger, is that your hand up?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all opposed? Four to one, we will have discussion. Mr. Gregory?
The way this can be expedited is the way they have it in Congress. You pass it subject to approval of council members or disapproval, and anything that they disapprove of can be brought up per item the next time. Otherwise, it's passed. That's how they do it in Congress. I don't know why we just can't pass all this. And if somebody has objection to anything additional that's been put in there, it can be brought forth as a correction next time.
Is that an amendment?
Well, we're in discussion right now, and then I plan to make this an amendment, yes.
Well, go ahead and make it.
Is this the time to make a, Mr. Schnall, is this the time to make an amendment to the motion during the discussion period?
You, an amendment to the motion can be made at this time, and if the, if the amendment is seconded, then the amendment can be discussed and then ultimately voted on. And depending on the outcome of that vote, you can go forward with either the main motion as originally made by Mr. McCormick or the main motion as amended.
I move that we accept all items in section A on the consent agenda, subject to approval by council members within the next month.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Gregory, that wasn't a motion to amend. So is that a motion to amend Mr. McCormick's motion?
Yes, sir.
To state something different?
No, it is, it's, it's an amendment only by saying that, let's get on with this now. And if anybody finds anything that they find disagreeable, they can bring it up per item next month, and that can be quickly passed next month, if anything.
So, Mr. Gregory, couldn't we conceivably just do what Mr. McCormick said, and you can come back and make amendments next month on the minutes?
I don't know whether that's allowed. Once you pass, once you pass...
You have to say...
Approval of the item, I don't know whether you can come back and amend it.
Ms. McLean, you've been waiting patiently. Yes, ma'am.
So some of these, these minutes I've read through four or five times because they've come up on agendas four or five times. I would like to read my corrections into the record because I'm prepared with them this evening, and I would love to hear everyone else's corrections so we can just get them adopted tonight, please. If I may, read my corrections, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Gonzalez, are you...
I really object to reading corrections of minutes here. They're very uninteresting to people. The corrections are supposed to be submitted in writing. I not only worked on all the minutes and submitted them in writing, but I sat down with the city secretary. I took time to do that, and the corrections are not here. That's what I'm objecting to. But I will vote for the amendment that Mr. Gregory made and don't want to read all the corrections here because nobody has copies of the minutes and they don't know what we're talking about.
Okay, Ms. McLean, do you have any other discussion on Mr. Gregory's?
No, just reading my corrections into the minutes or providing them to Mrs. Gonzalez in accordance with, with what Mr. McCormick had recommended.
Mr. Schnall?
Mayor, is there a second to Mr. Gregory's amendment?
I made a second.
Yes, a second by Ms. Winger. Okay, so now we vote on the amendment? Okay, Mr. McCormick?
I personally don't see any reason why anyone at any time cannot raise an objection and propose a correction to any previous month's minutes simply by putting it on the agenda and having a vote on it by the, by the council. So I don't see any real reason to have to have an amendment to the motion. Aside from that, I think that the point is, Ms. Winger, I believe, said she did not submit written corrections as she sat down and talked them over with Ms. Gonzalez, which is not what she said the rule was. She said we have to submit them in writing. I'm not sure that that's true. I don't know where that rule is, but if Ms. Winger has reference, I'll be happy to look it up. I am not, so I'm not in favor of accepting the proposed amendment because I don't think it's necessary. I think we can go ahead and have a vote and get done with this and move on with something significant.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Actually, Mr. Gregory is correct. In the past, once the minutes have been passed, they cannot be corrected. So the only way they can be corrected is with his amendment.
Where do you find that, Ms. Winger? Where do you find it? You said it's a citation of some sort. Where's the reference?
I don't have it in front of me, but it's always been the practice of this council, and I've had a lot of experience with it, much more than you have, where I have not been able to correct minutes subsequently.
Well, I've had an opportunity to look through the past actions of the council, and they've been as much wrong as right.
What's wrong with the amendment?
Ms. Winger?
The past is not a good reference. What we've always done is not really acceptable if you don't have a decent reference for it. I'm willing to accept the proposition that we can agree at this point to accept proposed changes to the minutes after we've approved them at the next regular council meeting.
Okay. So we have the amendment by Mr. Gregory, a second by Ms. Winger. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. So now we go back to the original item. Is that correct? The original amendment?
Mr. McCormick's motion has now been amended by the addition of the phrase that Mr. Gregory stated, and, and now the motion as amended is ready for discussion and possible action by the governing body.
Do we have any discussion for the motion as amended? All in favor? Unanimous. Perfect. Thank you so much, council. Item B...
I don't think we have to go to item B. My motion originally was to accept the entire consent agenda on one vote.
Okay. Thank you so much. New businesses conduct a public hearing on the proposed 2019 tax rate of .501345 per hundred dollar of taxable valuation. The proposed tax rate will raise more total property taxes by $180,297 or 5.173 percent. And of that amount, $34,760 is a tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year. This is the second of two required public hearings on the proposed 2019 tax rate. It is 6:49. I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on this? Dr. Flynn? Yes, sir.
I'm Mike Flynn, 111 Amerson Lane. I see this as a tax increase. I don't think anybody likes tax increases, but given the state of our roads and our drainage systems and the fact that we've now capped people at a tax rate that are over 65, I would like to submit that I am in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Ms., let me finish this public hearing, and I'll get to you, Mr. Gregory. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, it is 6:50. I'll be closing the public hearing. The city council will adopt, will vote to adopt the 2019 tax rate at this meeting here at City Hall at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. Mr. Gregory?
Just to note, this is not a tax increase. We're getting more revenue because of higher valuations. The adult tax rate has remained the same, but this is just a open, this is just a hearing. We're not voting on anything.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have consider an act on resolution 2019-09-10, a resolution of the city council of the City of Castle Hills, Texas, amending resolution R19-06-11-A to comply with passage of House Bill 2840 by the 86 legislature concerning rules for citizens participating at meetings of the city council.
Motion to go ahead and actually pass it as written.
A motion to pass as written.
Mr. Mayor?
Second by Ms. Winger. Yes, ma'am, Ms. McLean.
I have a question to, which as written, because my packet contains two different versions of this resolution. One, excuse me, Ms. Winger?
Ms. Winger, Ms. McLean's talking. Yes, ma'am, please continue.
The first version does not contain some statutory language that the second version contains, which I think needs to be included in the resolution. So I would like to make amendment to Mr. Sanderson's motion that we adopt the second proposed resolution, the one that includes the interlineations.
Okay, we have an amendment by Ms., a motion to amend by Ms. McLean? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCormick. Discussion. Ms. Winger?
Yeah, now, there are a number of things that were in the prior version, which I guess are now included, this is Mr. Schnall's version, that are actually irrelevant. Number one, one of the things that's referred to is simultaneous, what they call translation, which is an incorrect term. It's actually simultaneous interpretation. You do not have to have equipment. You can actually do simultaneous interpretation here. It has only come up in the last five years once, and I was able to do the simultaneous interpretation without equipment because that was my profession. So unless you have a situation, it seems to me that since the way we have written this, the council can always vote to give somebody additional time if, in fact, they come in and speak some other language, you know, such as Chinese, which most of us would not be able to interpret for, then they would have somebody speaking for them, which would be an interpreter who might do consecutive, not simultaneous. And I'm sure the council would allow that person to speak, and you don't have to write everything into an ordinance because that's something that the council would simply do as we have always done.
Ms. McLean?
The statute as written makes reference to simultaneous translation, not, as you say, Ms. Winger. I believe that the way Mr. Schnall drafted the ordinance or the, the resolution, excuse me, tracks the statutory language used. So if the legislature got it wrong, that's where I would take up the change in language. I think it's very important that we include something in our resolution that mentions that if someone has to have translation services, the amount of time that they will be given because that is something that is expressly mentioned in the statute. So I feel that it is incumbent upon us as a council to make sure that we have addressed that and we don't leave it open-ended.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Mr. McCormick, Mr. Sanderson?
Yeah, Mr. Sanderson?
Mr. required.
I agree with Ms. McLean. The, the apparent intent, and I have to say that I'm, I'm supposing here, of Ms. Winger's version is to limit all speech by citizens to two minutes rather than the three specified in the state statute recently becoming effective. I think Mr. Schnall's version, which has just been passed out to council, is the one to be adopted. I think we should go ahead and adopt it and not suppose that we can at some future time agree to give people their rights under state law when, when the statute that we proposed to implement under Ms. Winger's proposal is contrary to state law and requires two-minute limits rather than three. It's not appropriate for us to try to change state law with the vote of the council. I think we should go with Mr. Schnall's version.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Ms. Winger?
Yes. Actually, you're incorrect. If you read the state law, it does not require us to give any amount of time. It can be one minute. It can be half a minute. It doesn't say that there's a specific amount of time. And Mark and I met with most of the citizens who asked for this timeout in the first place, and we promised that it would only last until September, so we're keeping our word on that. But they felt that there were specific people that were coming up repeatedly, time after time, on the same agenda item, and that at the very least, we should try cutting it to two minutes. If we find that we don't have that kind of repetition, we can always change it later, but this is what the majority of citizens wanted at that time. It is not required by state law to have three minutes.
If Mr. Schnall says that's so, I'll agree to it, but it still seems to me, Ms. Winger, that this is an effort to limit the opportunity for speech of the citizens. I'm opposed to that. I think we should give them the three minutes. It was the tradition and, and the way we've always done it, by the way, in Castle Hills. And so I think we should continue with that three-minute limit. I agree that there are people who come up on a repeated basis. There are folks in the world who have a very limited vocabulary but use it incessantly. And to those folks, we have to encourage them to limit their opportunity to use that limited vocabulary over and over again. So that's something we need to deal with on a person-to-person basis rather than to impose those limitations on the entire citizenry.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Gregory, you had comment?
Mr. Schnall, what does the state law say about time limits? And what is it?
The state law is silent about an amount of time. It doesn't say one minute, two minutes, three minutes, five minutes. My recollection from the length of time I've lived in this community is that it's always been three minutes. That is typically what it is in other cities that I represent. It varies from city to city, but three minutes seems to be the sweet spot for that. I would like to point out that the red line of the resolution, which was passed out by Mr. Rapley this evening, and the black and white red line of the resolution that was in the posted packet for this meeting, was a red line not of a document I previously had circulated to this council, but I reviewed the proposed resolution that Ms. Winger filed with the city, and the red line changes, the underline changes and crossed-out changes are to that resolution that Ms. Winger presented last week for consideration at this meeting. So it's very easy to see on this document the few changes that I made to the document that Ms. Winger submitted last week. As Ms. McLean stated, the language in House Bill 2840, it uses the phrase simultaneous translation equipment, and it uses the verb must, that, that this language must be in this ordinance, in this resolution, under the circumstances that we face today.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. I would like to add just one thing real quick. For the past approximately two months, citizens have not been able to speak, and I would feel like our meetings haven't been any shorter because of that. If we've been offering three minutes historically, I don't see why we wouldn't continue to do so. Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Schnall, in the future, if it turns out we're, we return to the same, same number of citizens who come up in bunches on every single minute and drone on for three minutes, can this be amended later on down the road?
Yes, sir, as long as the amendments are in conformity with House Bill 2840.
I would suggest that we stick with three minutes for one reason. You never know what future councils may want to have. They may want to have this...
You never know what future councils may want to have. They may want to have this thirty seconds, and if they have the majority, they can stifle speech dramatically. So that I would say we stick with the traditional three, but to keep an eye out to see whether or not we have people who constantly come up over and over and over again to deliberately to delay the meeting. And if we see a pattern occurring at that time, we can revisit this, but for right now, I would be willing to keep it at three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Sanderson, you have a comment?
None at this time, thank you.
Okay. Ms. McLean?
I take some exception to the comment that citizens would comment on items to deliberately delay council meetings, because I can genuinely see our citizens being interested in every single thing on an agenda and would welcome everyone to speak on every single item if you really had something to say on it. So I think that assuming that citizens are talking and commenting on items because they wanted to delay meetings and sit here for longer is kind of a red herring. I think we have to assume that our citizens are commenting on things that they have a genuine interest in and would like to provide input to council.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Yes, Mr. McCormick?
It happens that I agree with Ms. McLean. My thought is that probably folks who stand up with comments believe they have something that's important to be said or something that they feel they want to say for whatever reason, and oftentimes just don't think of the impact on the duration of the meeting, and will get up and make the same kind of comments with regard to more than one agenda item, whatever it is, self-aggrandizement, commentary, and just the need to be seen and speak and that sort of thing. So I think that that probably is the tenor of what's happening, is people just get up and speak without realizing that if we have twenty agenda items and one person, just one person gets up to speak on every agenda item, that adds a whole hour to the council meeting. And if we have two or three people get up and speak, well, that adds two or three hours to the council meeting, and that's something that we can probably do without. The problem is, we don't have to fill that whole three minutes, and so I think it's important to get up and say what you have to say and sit down and be done with it. The other comment that I want to make is that there is a provision in here which says that, and I agree with the provision, so the City Council may not prohibit criticism of the City Council, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service. This does not apply to public criticism that's otherwise prohibited by law. Now, fair criticism is one thing. Insults, accusations, and recriminations are a whole different species of cat, and those are things which we can prohibit, because they're not fair criticism. If you get up and make an accusation against someone in the council or make it, or deliberately insult somebody as being an idiot or whatever else you may have in mind at the moment, that's inappropriate, and it's entirely within the mayor's purview to stop that kind of speech immediately and ask you to sit down. And I personally think he should do that, because we really don't have time to waste on those kinds of things during a council meeting, which may already run several hours.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, so we have an amendment by Ms. McLean and a second by Mr. McCormick.
Exactly what is the amendment that we're voting?
Ms. McLean, would you mind repeating it?
Yes, my amendment was to adopt the red-lined resolution that was provided by Mr. Schnall that complies with the state statute, House bill, well, it was adopted in House Bill Number Twenty Eight Forty.
Thank you. And includes a three-minute time limit.
Correct.
I'm sorry?
Second.
I'm not used to having citizens to speak. We have somebody signed up for this one. Mr. Paul? Okay, well, since this is our first meeting back, we'll probably have a little bit of latitude, and if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand and come forward.
Frank Paul, one twelve, Chalamar. I find this discussion very interesting, because the biggest offender of getting up here and doing things that you're talking about not doing is sitting right there. I'll use the example that in January two thousand eighteen, she stood right here and called a citizen a criminal. But anyway, we'll get past that. Let's get to the law that we're talking about. One of the things in reading the backdrop of all the stuff on the, on the, this particular agenda item, it talked about limiting the number of, let's say, I want to say something on a particular item, and somebody over here wants to say the same thing. I don't know if he wants to say it, but he comes up, he wants to say it. Well, as I read what the agenda item says, is you all can stop that from happening. Well, the law that we're referring to, a governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item of the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. Point being is, as I have had sitting up there, you can have thirty people up here saying the same thing, but they have their right to say it. Believe me, many times I wish they weren't saying it, because you get to jest after four or five, but it's our right, it's their right to say it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Do we have anybody else?
You got several hands up in the back.
Okay. Dr. Flynn?
I have a question.
Let's let the people finish speaking, and we'll go from there.
Mike Flynn, one eleven, Amerson Lane. I'd like to follow up with what Mr. Paul said. I understand that some of these meetings tend to go long, but at the same time, you signed up and you got, decided to run for office, that you would be willing to listen to our opinion. Now, one person could say something, but there's also power in numbers, okay? If I come up as one person and say something, you might say, okay, I blow it off, you know, I agree with it, or I don't, you blow it off. But if you have thirty other people saying the same thing, I think that adds power and emphasizes how people feel about something, okay? Now, don't put, I would not like to have, I would like to have the City Council not put the onus on the citizens, per se, for some of these meetings going long. Yeah, sometimes there's a lot of comments to be said. On the other hand, we've had meetings where there have been twenty-five agenda items, okay? Those are going to go long regardless of whether anybody has anything to say. And some of those agenda items have been of such import as to remove tables or take down plaques, okay? Who's that on? That's not on the citizens for wasting time. That's on the people that put that on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn. Mr. Squire?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, John Squire, two eight, Chattanooga Court. I just have a couple items on this agenda that I feel is important, and appreciate the opportunity to speak here first. I guess the first thing I want to say is, is it does take guts for a citizen to come up here and talk, especially one that hasn't been in those hot seats before. It takes a lot of guts to get up here, and I ask you to encourage citizens to be able to speak, because it touches on your First Amendment rights to be able to speak. And again, council, you need to be encouraging people to come up respectfully and share their opinion, because that's our, that should be our right. And I did not believe in this timeout. I think that was a bunch of horse, you-know-what. That was the most ridiculous thing I ever heard, first of all. Second of all, Douglas, be careful when you say droning, people that are droning, please, because this is, this is what we're up here trying to speak and stuff, and I know you're into that. I know you didn't mean it like that. Just be careful of that speech going forward. Thank you, Douglas. Third, there's an item in here about recommending citizens to combine the times or combine into one speaker, but you give no vehicle, because if you're going to combine it all into one, usually it takes more time. I sat on that. I sat up there, and that was done with me as a, as a sitting councilman. People would combine into one. There would be like fifteen people that combined into one. They had a minor little presentation. It was under citizens to be heard, but you can't do that in two or three minutes, and you give no vehicle for people to do that. And I think, I think if you're going to add that clause in there, you need to give at least a mechanism to where, if you're going to combine it into one, to give them the time. And then finally, I'm not sure what's resolution here that we're even looking at. There's been, there was a lot of discussion, and I question if you guys should even, should table this at this point and rethink this, because I, as a public, am I, was I even presented with the proper resolution, since there's two resolutions we're looking at? I think there's a question of this being presented to the public before you all discuss this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Do we have anybody else? Mr. Howell?
Tim Howell, one fifteen, Sunflower. First of all, yapping, drone on. I would like for the councilmen to explain exactly somewhere down the line, not tonight, because we don't have time, what exactly that means. When I was the mayor, whether it was a short meeting or long meeting, the, you know, I don't think I ever referred to anybody as yapping or drone on. We have the right of citizens to speak and come up and speak within the order of law. And for, I feel like that I have a pretty good pulse on the citizenry, and I haven't heard one time that any citizen said this timeout or whatever it is. They do that across the street. They don't do it in a, in a, I'll say it again, they do that across the street, Leslie. They don't do that in a, in a, on the dais or in the chambers. On the dais or in City Hall. All I would ask is, is that when you're considering this, I'm going to echo what Mr. Squire said, and maybe I'll table this, because there's two versions out there. There's one that apparently goes by the law, and there's another one that wants to continue down the path of what has been going on since, since the last two months. So with that said, I would, I would like to see you table it and decide, and not in five minutes, up here, because the citizenry deserves more than that. They deserve to know exactly what it says. And there's two of them floating around out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Okay. Ms. McLean?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Rapley? The second resolution with the red lines was also included in the packet, correct, that was posted?
Yes.
So it was the first, the original that Ms. Winger presented, and then behind it was the second resolution with Mr. Schnall's suggestions?
Yes, as requested, to place in the agenda that way.
Okay, so we did have that out for the public to see. My question to Mr. Schnall is that in reading back at the, at the House bill that was passed, and in looking in paragraph E in our proposed resolution, I really do think we probably have a conflict between our resolution and the statute, because the new section would read, "A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on the agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item." So I hesitate to adopt something where we can force a group of people to speak through one person, because I think that goes against everyone shall be allowed to speak. Can you give me an opinion on that?
Yes, ma'am. The wording of paragraph E does not permit the council to unilaterally, now happening to me with the microphone, the language in paragraph E is an option. It is not something that the council can mandate or require. Speakers with similar or common interests are encouraged, not required, encouraged to select someone to act as a spokesman, a spokesperson, in order to move the proceedings along. The proceeding officer or a majority of the council may urge, not may require, simply may urge, the implementation of this rule at any time. If, if the will of the council is to simply delete paragraph, sub-paragraph E from either my version or Ms. Winger's version, that is the, that is the right and privilege of the governing body, but I do not feel that as worded, my opinion is that paragraph E still is consistent with House Bill Twenty Eight Forty, because it does not permit the council to prohibit the succession of speakers. It simply encourage, allows the council to suggest, encourage that combination in the interest of time for all concerned. But E is not necessary one way or the other. You know, my view, however, contrary to former Mayor Howell and Mr. Squires, is that it is important for the council to act this evening so that there are rules that everyone knows, the council, the staff, and the citizens, about what citizens' rights are under this portion of the agenda and on every agenda item. And without something along these lines, we're still left somewhat in limbo.
Okay, thank you. That's why I'd asked Mr. Rapley to just verify that we had posted this, because I too was worried about making sure that we have something on, on file that is compliant with the statute, because right now our rules are out of compliance. So thank you, Mr. Schnall.
Mr. McCormick, yes, sir?
Yes, I want to address the comment about placing onus for maintaining time limits on, on the public. I don't think that we're doing that. I think, in case you all haven't noticed, we're all in this meeting together, and it's incumbent on the council to make an effort to keep the meetings as concise and reasonably short as is practical to do. And I think it's reasonable for the council and reasonable for the, for the resolution here to encourage people to make use of combining comments. For example, if somebody gets up and does their full three minutes, and there are another dozen folks who have those same comments to make, it really probably isn't necessary to repeat that same comment a dozen times. It's reasonable to get up and say, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so about what she said regarding X, Y, Z, and I want the council to know that I feel real strongly about it, and I will take action at the next election if I don't see some kind of results that I think are reasonable. I think that's a reasonably short comment, thirty seconds or less, that adopts the previous comments and lets everybody know what your thoughts are, and you're not obligated to do that. That's just something you can do to be nice, to cut down the time that we all spend sitting here listening to each other.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Do we have any other comments? Okay, we had a motion by Ms. McLean, a second by Mr. McCormick for the amended motion. All in favor? Unanimous. Now, back to the original motion?
We're back to the original motion as amended, so this would be discussion followed by action to complete the adoption of the second version, the red-line version of the resolution on citizen participation.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Do we have a discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, council. Okay, item number three, accept the recommendation of the city manager to confirm Laura Fiegans to the position of Finance Director, Mr. Rapley.
Mayor, council. I'm pleased to inform you, I have selected Laura Fiegans. Ms. Fiegans brings over twenty years of municipal accounting experience with a progressive track record of advancement in her public finance career. During Ms. Fiegans' twenty-year career in municipal finance, she has worked for the cities of Chavano Park, Sybalo, Elgin, specifically as Finance Director. She has also worked as a governmental auditor, excuse me, for a private firm to conduct audits of cities, counties, and schools, districts. Ms. Fiegans has been our financial consultant for over the last fifteen months as contracted employee, and assisted with the last two audits were done in exemplary manner. Ms. Fiegans assisted with the development of the FY nineteen adopted budget and assisted greatly in the currently putting together the FY twenty twenty proposed budget. She has been instrumental in a number of changes to our fiscal preparation and planning for the City of Castle Hills. Last March, the city financials were several months behind. This did not provide a true and accurate reflection of the current operating budget in order to address this. I brought in Ms. Fiegans, who was an experienced financial officer, to address the reconciliation demand, eventually closed out the audit last year. Since this time, Ms. Fiegans has become very familiar with our financial system, investments, and accounting practices for the City of Castle Hills. Over the last six months, the city's had very few qualified applicants for the Finance Director. In April, I interviewed two candidates. One decided to remain with the current city, and the other found another position. Since then, the city had one qualified applicant, which Council McGregor and I interviewed in July. This applicant was a contractor in another city and decided to remain in that position. The Finance Director is a unique position for the organization of the city. This position involves and is responsible for the planning This position involves and is responsible for the planning, coordination, and management of the city's operations and activities related to the finance division. This position prepares and maintains various types of financial records reports, month-to-month reconciliation, year-end closing duties, and coordinates and participates in the audit process. The finance director administers and supervises all aspects of the city of Castle Hills' financial operations, including budget development and monitoring, with working on long and short-term investment goals. Ms. Fiegans, during her municipal career, has extensive experience as it relates to public finance management, specifically the processing of monthly, yearly general ledger entries, preparation of financial statements, development of financial policies, procurement practices, and preparation of city annual budget. As a result, I believe Ms. Fiegans is an ideal selection and would work well in our organization. I've reached out to former colleagues who recommended her for the finance director as well. Obviously, at this time, Ms. Fiegans requires confirmation by the city council before she would start in October. I look forward to welcoming her to our team. Obviously, if confirmed, she will join the staff on October fourteenth. Ms. Fiegans will continue to assist with the development of the FY twenty twenty proposed budget as we move forward with adoption as a consultant. There's a number of things that I've had Ms. Fiegans working with myself and Mr. Gregory, and we've outlined a number of things that need to happen as soon as she comes on board, hopefully, which is an investment policy, banking depository, assisting with taking on a new audit coming on here soon, a new auditor, and then possibly looking at researching alternate systems to possibly integrate our financial system down the road. And Laura is here, if she have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Ms. McLean.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we confirm the city manager's recommendation that we hire Laura Fiegans to be this finance director for the city of Castle Hills.
Second.
Okay, we have, first, I have Ms. McLean, a second by Mr. McCormick. Any discussion? Mr. Gregory.
I have dealt with Ms. Fiegans for many, many, many months while we've been searching for a finance director. And I think you have to look at the overall job performance of what she's done. I think it is solid. And I believe that this is an admirable pick, and the city will be better off having her as our finance director.
Any other discussion? I, I do have a question for Ms. Fiegans. I hadn't asked you before, I apologize. I promise it's not hard. You're, you are obviously familiar slash proficient with Assist, correct?
Yes, it's pretty, very similar software to, I'd say similar to QuickBooks. It's not very complicated.
And this, just, everybody knows Assist is our accounting software that we currently use. Are you familiar with ENCODE?
Very, very familiar.
Okay.
And some other softwares. I've used others. STW, USTI, there's several out there.
Okay, that is what I had. Thank you. Okay, council, we have a motion by Ms. McLean, a second by Mr. McCormick. If there's no other discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Did you have a vote, Ms. Winger, or Mr. Sanderson?
I'm abstaining.
Oh, abstaining? Abstaining, okay, so that's three, four, and two abstentions pass Ms. Fiegans will be our new finance director. Welcome. Next, we have discussion and possible action on ordinance number two zero one nine dash zero nine dash one zero, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Castle Hills, Texas, amending the city's fiscal year twenty nineteen budget to provide funds and administration department to extend the permit clerk position until December thirty first, twenty nineteen, to ensure the essential city services for the city of Castle Hills, and continuation of the residential and commercial permitting and setting an effective date. Mr. Rappley.
Yes, mayor, thank you. This position was funded for nine months back in December, and I'm asking for, or requiring a budget amendment and asking for an additional three months to fund this position through the end of the year. I have put the position in the proposed budget for funding, so I'm just trying to make sure there's not a gap. Right now, I have a person who's taken over those duties and wants to maintain her in those duties moving forward. And so right now, I need to require the council to do the budget amendment to have the permit clerk position move forward past September thirtieth.
Okay. Do we have any motions?
I mean, we accept the recommendation of Mr. Rappley to pass our pre-ordinance number two one, two zero one nine dash zero nine dash ten, as providing funding for the permit clerk position through the end of this fiscal year.
Perfect. We have a first by Mr. McCormick. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. McLean. Discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Gregory.
One of the items you have on Agenda Four is under pro, under issue. This position requires full-time staffing to meet the operational needs of the community. I would like to know what it is that we're pulling from that, that says it requires this. Have we had the same number of permits pulled this year as were pulled last year? Or what are, what are the things that require this position to be in right now? When, as I understand it, we have fewer permits being issued than we did in two thousand, I think, two thousand and four or five?
Councilman Gregory, yes, I believe in my last city manager report, I put the total numbers this year of permits, and I think it's on pace, similar to last year. I know the revenue's slightly down. I think that's related to the new state legislation for residential permits. But the idea of the permit clerk involves multiple aspects, from coordinating from an inspection standpoint to intake of permits. And then, I, not citing it from something particular where I say that it's a, say, required position, but operationally in our administration office, it is a full-time job. And right now, again, we're, we're close to or similar on the permits from last year. I know the permits in two thousand seventeen were higher than eighteen, from that standpoint.
Would, in your opinion, would we ever reach the point, due to lack of permits, number of permits issued, that the full-time position would no longer be needed? Remember, this is never, this was not a full-time position until the last few years. We've gone years without it being a full-time position. Do you see the possibility of ever allowing this position to lapse?
I don't see it, well, I mean, it depends. I mean, if we were to move forward to different avenues, maybe more automation for permitting, that could be done more online from, from that aspect, but the, the walk-in, everyday permits right now are assisted by the permit clerk that walk them through from anywhere from a tree permit to a commercial and/or residential permits, and then works with the building inspector on the inspection aspects of completing that permit and closing it out.
Thank you. And this impact on the budget is fifteen thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
And how big's the budget?
Sorry?
How big is the budget for the city?
Big, well, this is out of FY two thousand nineteen, six point nine million?
Six point nine million, thank you.
Do we have other, Ms. McLean?
Well, I would just like to point out that there, there's so much that goes on in the office, and I think there's an expectation that people, that the office be open certain hours, whether that's seven to three, or eight to four, or nine to five, or whatever the hours are. And those are hours that you have to have somebody available to issue permits, but we have phones that need to be answered, we have filing that needs to be done, we have open records requests that need to be done, and all sorts of other things for the city. So I think that it really ends up being that the permit clerk doesn't just handle permits, they have many, many other, other jobs that dovetail with other people, so that there's enough staffing for people to take vacations and be able to stay home if they're sick. So I can see that there are multiple reasons to have this position added back in.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
Mayor, just on a point that Ms. McLean made, there, there is a few aspects, again, with the calls that come in for the permits, follow-up on inspections, our current permit clerk is doing passports. There's an array of duties, not just intake for permits itself. And so it is, again, like I said, full-time. I'm hoping, obviously, this will move forward, because I kind of have an idea for a possible reorganization in the administrative office that would open up the administrative to the assistant city manager position, and get us back to, as Ms. McLean said, cross-training and allow us for time when people are out, whether sick or vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Sanderson.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Mr. McCormick.
I've had the opportunity to observe the people performing in that position over the past year or so, and I'd say it's pretty much full-time. The job description says other duties as assigned, or as may be assigned, and most job descriptions do. But it includes such things as Mr. Rappley being busy on the phone and saying, "Would you make me a copy of this?" Or, "Would you call so-and-so?" Or, "Somebody calling in says I need to make a building inspection or have a building inspection," and the permit clerk winds up coordinating that building inspection, calling the building inspector, and setting up times and so forth, and making those schedules. So this, the, the permits clerk is definitely a full-time position, and our permit clerk is assisting with the passport office unless I'm mistaken. Is that right, Mr. Rappley?
Yes, sir, councilman. That is correct.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, having been in the office and watched Ms. Olmer, who is our permit clerk, she's kind of juggling chainsaws, as I would say, between answering the phone, taking people coming in the front window, and helping in the back office. And I think that's one of the great things about our small city, is that so many people are cross-trained in helping to pick up where we need help. I think that this is a position that we need to fill full-time. Do we have any other questions, council? Ms. Winger.
I was under the impression that Ms. Olmer was the administrative assistant.
That's not what I was aware of, Mr. Rappley.
Ms. Olmer was in the administrative assistant to the city manager, but had taken over the permitting clerk duties primarily due to Ms. Kokowski leaving, and so there's more of a demand to have someone to process those permits and inspections. The administrative assistant to the city manager is still warranted, and again, the primary duties is to service our residents and commercial folks that come in and need permits right now, so we can keep things moving, business services in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. I have no other, Ms. Winger.
So you're saying that there are now two separate positions?
They've always been two separate positions.
No, they haven't always been, as Mr. Gregory pointed out. I'm asking you if that's what they are now.
Last year, when I came here, in February of two thousand eighteen, there was a full-time permit clerk and a full-time administrative assistant to the city manager.
Ms. Winger.
Yeah, but it hasn't always been the case, that's all.
Again, as we talked about in the budget last year, I can't speak prior to how or when those positions came in. I just know that they're utilized now, currently in the administration office. And if I would be the first, the city manager, to come forward to council to say if the position wasn't warranted or needed at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Ms. McLean.
The permit clerk, according to the position sheet that you created, came about in two thousand sixteen, so we've had that position for four years. Before that, there were various other part-time clerks that helped, so I can see how some of those jobs have consolidated into this position.
Perfect, thank you. If we have no further discussion, I'll take a vote. All in favor? Opposed? At three to two, with Ms. Winger and Mr. Sanderson voting against. Okay, we have, item number five, discussion, a possible action to enter into a revival and amendment to interlocal agreement with Bear County for purchasing services, and authorize myself to execute such revival and amendment with Bear County for purchasing services. Mr. Rappley.
Yes, mayor, this is just a revival and amendment. Originally, the city of Castle Hills entered into an interlocal for purchasing service with Bear County back in two thousand fifteen, and at some point was suspended, terminated, or not moved forward. And I'm asking for a revival and amendment for the mayor to sign and execute to move forward, so we can work on the county on joining and participating in their program to move forward with some of our street material needed for our street program. This is in line with the proposed budget. We had a street program which identified about twenty-eight streets for seal coats. We didn't get any bids. I think this will help us move forward based on the cost programmed in to the FY twenty twenty budget to do these streets in partnership with the county services.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have a motion?
Motion to, to adopt.
We have a motion by Mr. Sanderson, a second by Mr. Gregory. Do we have any discussion?
All right, can I get clarification on your motion, Mr. Sanderson? You are adopting his recommendation, is that what you're doing?
Recommendation as it's stated, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, and if we have no discussion, all in favor? Perfect, unanimous, thank you, council. Item number six, discussion of possible action on the procurement of a sanitation truck and possible trade-in or other disposition of a used sanitation truck. Mr. Rappley.
Yes, mayor, this item was presented to me by Mr. Harada, our public works director. Apparently, in our fleet, we have three sanitation vehicles. This one was purchased in two thousand nine, has constantly had mechanical issues, somewhat failures, and so we've been putting money into the maintenance of this. We believe it's, it's sort of at their last, and I'll have Mr. Harada speak later to the operational matters with the, the truck itself. It's sort of got to a point where we need to look at purchasing or procuring this new sanitation truck and trading in the old one. We budgeted eighty-five thousand last year in an effort towards the purchase of this truck. I've identified this in the proposed budget as far as the ending projected balance to expend this out of the two thousand nineteen budget for the hundred and twenty thousand that's there. We went through the Houston-Galveston area council co-op to purchase this truck and get a quote, and the backup has all of the details relating to the actual cost, the profile and equipment of the truck itself. This would be the second truck purchased, I believe, in the last four or five years. The one in two thousand fifteen was purchased, there was a two thousand six that was replaced, and this would be the second in our fleet to replace based on wear and tear and mileage. They obviously get a lot of use since commercially, excuse me, since residentially, we provide services, essentially municipally services to our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt, everton.
Okay, and we have a motion by Mr. Sanderson. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Ms. McLean. Do we have any discussion?
I just had a couple of questions for Rick or Ryan, whoever might have questions about the emissions for the truck.
Ms. McLean has a couple of questions for you, Mr. Harada.
Just to clarify, this is all, they're going to be our third trade-out since Mr. Chance has implemented this fleet vehicle to where we allocated fifty thousand a year to turn over every fifth to sixth year to keep maintenance down, and it has worked out. We have two thousand thirteen international and two thousand seventeen international, and both come equipped with that emission system, and that's what you're going to speak of. The two thousand and nine doesn't, so it would have to be brought up to date, and that would cost a little bit more money there.
Okay, I'm only asking because I know that there's a big push, because San Antonio is a non-attainment area for ozone, and so the big discussions at the ACOG meetings for the area cities has been replacing trucks with natural gas, which, of course, we can't just have one vehicle that's natural gas. So I assume, since it's a newer vehicle, that our emissions will be better and we'll be doing our part, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Very high concern, yes, miss. That's why they're all developing that. They go in through a charging system after so many hours that they'll blow out the carbon and make sure that we're having clean exhaust coming out.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And just a point in the cost, the extended warranty is included in the, the quote itself.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. And Mr. Gregory? Okay, council, if there's no other, Ms. Winger, yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm assuming, and maybe I missed it here, that we actually, you know, did a bid, and this was the best price we could get?
Yes, miss.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, council, if there's no further questions, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you so much. Item number seven, discussion on status of lawsuits filed, Silvio Gonzalez et al. versus city of Castle Hills, et al., cause number twenty nineteen dash CI dash one four five nine five, and possible action.
I believe this needs to go to executive session. I believe this needs to go to executive session, I don't think we can discuss lawsuits out here, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Schnall?
No, sir.
No, that's not correct. The council has the option of going into executive session to confer with its attorney if it's indicated. But I believe the mayor has a statement of the status of this litigation. And once that statement is made, the council can decide what, if anything, it wants to do.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schnall, yes. As of yesterday, we received notice that the plaintiff Sylvia Gonzalez dropped, non-suited, all parties involved, and the suit is officially dismissed. As far as possible action, I did have a little bit of concern regarding the legal fees that we incurred as a city fighting this. And my question to Mr. Schnall was if we were in a position to recover any of those legal fees. Mr. Schnall?
At this point, Mayor, that would require some research in view of the current status of the case, being that it is, the case has been non-suited and dismissed. And, you know, I'm glad for, if the council wants that researched on to determine if the city would be able to recover attorney's fees under the current status, that can be looked into, but I'm not prepared to give an opinion on that at this time.
Okay, thank you. We have two people signed up to speak. Mr. Squire, you're first on the list.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, John Squire, two-eight Channington Court. Don't have notes on this, this is coming from the heart, but I think when Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Winger and Ms. Sylvia sued our city, I think that was a disgrace. I'm glad some sense finally came to it. I do believe that Mr. Sanderson, Ms. Winger, and Ms. Gonzalez should pay for all of the charges that I had to pay for out of my tax dollars for this ridiculous suit that happened. And I ask, as a council, appropriate members of council, to consider protecting my tax dollars that are wasted and could have gone to other uses. For example, infrastructure being my passion, maintenance of our city. And so please consider that as we move forward, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Mr. Paul?
Frank Paul, one-twelve Shalamar. To take off on what Mr. McCormick said earlier, I'll say, first of all, I agree with everything that John Squire just said. This was frivolous, unnecessary, all council had to do was appoint the person back if that's what they so wanted to do. Number two, there's a lot of extra damages that go on here. It's my understanding that we're going to be losing our city secretary during this suit for the citizens to know these three people sued the mayor, sued Amy, and sued our city secretary for doing their job. That was absurd, ridiculous, childish, frivolous, whatever you want to call it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Okay.
I have a comment.
Ms. Winger, yes, ma'am?
Yes, it was not frivolous to support the will of the voters. That is never something that's frivolous, that is what happened here. And I think it's absolutely absurd to consider that the city should recover anything when all that was happening is that the will of the voters was subverted in this case by the actions of Mr. Schnall and Ms. Gonzalez and the city manager. So that's what happened, and it's very unfortunate that it happened, and the voters are not happy about it.
Mr. Paul? Mr. Paul? Mr. Paul, thank you. Do we have any other comments by council? Mr. Sanderson?
A simple legal precept called equity could have been applied in this case, what is right, what is fair. What is fair was is that Mrs. Gonzalez won by seventy-six votes, and we have the lady that she beat sitting here on position three. That's the bottom line. And by the utilization of equity, a first-year law student, all of them know this, what's fair? And what is fair is the person who was voted into office should be the one that serves. End of story.
Mr. McCormick?
Let me say that I object to attempting to litigate all this stuff here on the dais in front of the public by the council, I think it's inappropriate. The question now is just whether the council should consider pursuing attorney's fees. Mr. Schnall said it requires some research to do that, I'm not sure that it's worth doing. Let me say that in my thirty years practicing litigation here in San Antonio, my experience is that a lawsuit profits the lawyers more than anybody else. And for the most part, there really isn't a heck of a lot of good to come out of pursuing a lawsuit. However, our duty is to protect the citizens and to protect the money that we spend on behalf of the citizens. We've had to spend probably, I don't know what the number is exactly, I know that, I'm guessing that we're probably between forty and fifty thousand dollars total expenses in attorney's fees for the city, that's my guess. But I think it's worth our time to ask Mr. Schnall to look into it, to see if it's worth time, and for him to give us some idea of what it costs us to recover it, and make a reasoned decision about that. I don't know that it's worth doing, I don't know that there's profit to be had from it for the city or recompense for the money that we're going to be out of pocket. And I don't, I don't by any means advocate pouring good money after bad to chase money that's already been spent. But I think it is incumbent upon us to look into the question and to have Mr. Schnall give us an answer about it.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any other comments, Council? I'm sorry, Mr. Howell? Can you approach the dais, please? I mean, the podium?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I guess Mr. McCormick summed it up, and I just wanted to also say that I agree with, it's a matter of reimbursement is what it is. This was, whether it was frivolous, not frivolous, how you feel about it, or whatever, it costs the city forty to fifty thousand dollars, or somewhere in that neighborhood. And the taxpayers should not burden that. In fact, I would think, and I'll talk to Mr. Schnall later as a resident, whether or not that's even legal, to not go after it.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Okay, Council, do we have any other discussion? Do we have a motion? Okay?
I may, we authorize Mr. Schnall to inquire into the matter and to give us his opinion whenever it becomes available.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Ms. McLenn. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Schnall, I have a question.
Yes?
Because I was named in the lawsuit, I assume that my best course of action is to abstain from the vote, or it's not related to the subject matter, it's a quandary.
It's a personal decision. The standard for a member of a governing body to, a local governing body such as this, to recuse oneself from a vote is in chapter one seventy-one of the Local Government Code, and that speaks to having a real property interest or a business interest. And so it's not directly applicable. It's a matter of, you know, ethics and good conscience as to, you know, whether you were to simply decide to abstain on this to avoid an appearance of self-interest. I can't tell you that there's a legal precedent for it at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll finish that up, all in favor? Ms. McLenn was hanging there, three and opposed? Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Winger, okay, motion passes three to two. Okay, item number nine, public hearing on the proposed revision to section fifty dash fifty-three-nine of the zoning ordinance to provide for the City of Council to appoint members to the Board of Adjustment.
I make a move that we can table this until November, until we have a fully constituted city council with appropriately elected members and nobody, what do they call them? Folks that are sitting in the back or backups, or whatever it is.
I understand, Mr. Sanderson, that you're moving to postpone the matter till the next, till after the election, is that right?
That is correct. I think that it is appropriate to go ahead and move any of these items here, which are placing folks on, actually, pretty much all of these now, placing folks on various committees until after the election has been decided.
Okay, let me clarify, if I can restate for you, okay? As I understand it, Mr. Sanderson is moving to postpone items nine through sixteen until...
That would be fourteen, I believe.
Fourteen, I'm sorry. I don't do Roman numbers so well, what can I say?
We'll call it sixteen, sure.
Okay, so item nine through fourteen until after the November election to be considered by the newly seated council at that time.
I believe that to be fair, yes, sir.
And is, okay, when we do, I guess we need a second.
Mr. McCormick, or Michelle, I'm sorry.
It really isn't appropriate to do this unless items nine through fourteen are opened for council consideration. So that, you know, I'm not saying Mr. Sanderson's motion is out of order, it's just not ready until the presiding officer makes a determination on whether to open anything other than item nine. And also, I would ask the city secretary to make sure that, whether we have any citizens who have signed up to speak on any of these items before the motion is voted on. So the next step would be if, as presiding officer, you're comfortable with opening up items nine through fourteen, you can do that, and then Mr. Sanderson's motion would be in order.
I have no objection to that, I believe that's entirely fair to have people that have signed up to speak, absolutely.
Okay, citizens, if anybody's opposed to this, please come forward, but we'd like to table this until the November election, as Mr. Sanderson stated.
Mayor, you still need to open items nine through fourteen, you've only opened item nine.
So just go through and read each of them, Mr. Schnall?
Excuse me?
Just go through and read each of them?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. If council's okay with that, I'll proceed. Discussion of possible action on adopting ordinance number two zero one nine dash zero eight dash one three C in order to the City Council of Castle Hills, Texas, amending section five zero dash five three nine of chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances to revise a method of appointment of members and of alternate members of the Board of Adjustment, and a recommendation from the Zoning Commission to the City Council on revisions to fifty dash five three nine of the zoning ordinance to provide for the City Council to appoint members of the Board of Adjustments. Item number eleven, discussion of possible action to appoint, reappoint four members to the Ad Hoc Project Committee to fill vacant positions created by the election. Mr. Marx Anderson, Ms. Sylvia Gonzalez of the City Council, and Mr. J. Arthur Reedy of the Office of Mayor. Item number twelve, consider and act upon the appointment of Councilmember Winger to serve as mayor pro temp for a period of one year. Item number thirteen, consider and act upon the appointment to the Architectural Review Committee. And item number fourteen, consider and act on the appointment to the Board of Adjustments. Did I misskip nine? I started with nine. Okay. Okay, just in case for good measure. Public hearing on the proposed revision to section fifty dash five three nine of the zoning ordinance to provide for the City of Castle Hills to appoint members to the Board of Adjustments. Mr. Sanderson, do you have a motion?
Yes, I would go ahead and table all of these until November, until the election has completed its cycle.
Okay.
Mayor, restate. The use of table is improper in this context. The proper thing is to postpone until the November council meeting.
Mr. Sanderson, would you like to postpone these to the November council meeting?
Postpone, if the terminology is postpone, if that does the trick, yes, sir.
Okay, we have a first, a motion by Mr. Sanderson?
I think that the point that was made previously by Mr. McCormick was that it would be postponed until after the November election.
Yes.
Correct.
So let's stick with that.
Correct. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Winger, all in favor? All opposed? It passes four to one with Ms. McLenn's standing, or dissenting. Announcements by Mayor and City Council on items of community interests. Mr. McCormick, do you have anything?
I, the Project Committee and the Parks Commission met last weekend, and we had some good presentations from Mr. Gregory and Mr. Nastasi, who is the Economic Development Officer from Balcony Heights, and Ms. McLenn, who was kind enough to stop in and talk to us about the master plan. As a result of that, I think that action on the master plan is going to be picked up, and I think we'll see something come about on that pretty soon. Hopefully, we'll see some further action take place in the Project Committee. And while I'll be leaving shortly, as far as that's concerned, unless the council or committee reappoints me to do something, I think there are still a good number of items that need to be done by those committees or that can be done by those committees that will contribute to the quality of life and the future of Castle Hills, and I wish him well in that context.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Sanderson?
No comments at this time.
Ms. McLenn?
Don't forget that National Night Out is coming up in October, so please sign up to host a block party, or get together with your neighbors and walk around and meet some of your neighbors on different streets.
Ms. Winger? Mr. Gregory? Okay, Mr. Rappley?
Yes, Mayor, just a reminder, next Tuesday night at six-thirty, we have the budget hearing for the FY two thousand twenty budget.
Perfect. Thank you all so much for joining us. Do we have a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Sanderson, all in favor? It's seven fifty-seven, have a good evening.